Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Employee survey. I don't know why with historic turnover leading to many direct inefficiencies and real problems. According to the audit report or the first audit report, it led to, it certainly was a catalyst in our audit being delayed for, for months. So much so that the state took it upon themselves to withhold, what, a million, three hundred thousand dollars from us? And of course, it was splashed all over the state and didn't do much good for our branding. But I'm sure that's not the only issue. The delayed audit and then subsequently the delayed start to everything else as far as a budget concern. And subsequently, the voting for how many months without closed books? When organizations have obvious problems with turnover, I don't know what the percent is of the, the key employees, but the top employees was extremely high, record-setting percent, more so than anybody else around us this century, to my knowledge. And that impacts subsequent employee morale, that impacts subsequent exchanges with their clients, i.e. the citizens. Impacts the whole county. When you don't have, when you have high turnover and, and high morale, you've got problems at the very core. It's a cancer. And it would be like a human being going a year without doing anything about the cancer. It only gets worse and it could be terminal. I don't know why we've waited this long and thanks to Clarence Gilbert's urging, I know he first brought it up months ago. And finally, it looks like we're getting around to it. Don't you, you know, you, you gotta wonder if I was an employee, don't they care about me? Don't they see what's happening? Don't they see all these people leaving? Don't they see all the inefficiencies? Don't they understand that their job is to ensure that employees are, are taken care of? From a business standpoint, that's job one of any, any organization is take care of your employees. If you don't take care of your employees, they won't take care of you. And if they don't take care of you, they won't take care of the citizens. Now, every employee I've, I've run into and had interaction has been gracious, kind and professional, quite frankly. But it's gotta be a tremendous burden on them with this turmoil in our government. And we wouldn't have the turmoil if we had leadership that would have addressed it, what, well over a year ago. We've gone this, this time. You can't, you can't have a situation where your employees are obviously unhappy, are obviously not fulfilled, are obviously not getting the training that they need, are not getting the encouragement and coaching that they need. This is a systemic issue throughout our county and everyone in the county, but a council is aware of it. That's a shame. That's a shame and a stain on the entire county. Hopefully, we'll hear some very positive news that we're finally going to show as a county council that we care about the citizens of this county and that we care about the employees of the county. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Um, thank you. We're down now to, um, item number seven, public hearing. It is now six sixteen, we open the public hearing. An ordinance to establish operating capital budget for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two. To provide for the levy of taxes for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two. To establish fees and services charges for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two. To provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county-related funds. To provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain physical and other matters relating to county government, other matters related thereto. Do we have anyone to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. One person signed up to speak, Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Formerly District Two, formerly District One, all within the last few months. Like to express-
You, you said what?
Well, don't take away my time.
Right.
Thank you. I'd like to express my disappointment in the whole entire budget process, which I have done before. And of course, one of those is the, the lack of transparency that we've seen in, in the financial reporting. We saw that last time, we complained last time. We never did see those reports that pertain to the budget that I referenced. We still haven't seen the audit, we still haven't seen the balance sheet, we still haven't seen the income statement, we still haven't seen the worksheet, we still haven't seen the operational summary. It's kept us in the dark, but heck, done that before. The other issue I have with, with the process is, is that we seemingly are putting our wants before needs. We need items that pertain to health, self, safety and welfare, i.e. first responder equipment and support. There's a lot of things we don't need and a lot of things we don't separate needs from wants and a lot of things we don't look at. One example was the, um, lack of questions for the presenters. Particularly disturbing was the, uh, Midlands Tech lack of questions. We never did get a justification for our money from, from a, an organization that has one or two classes, a, a session. Never did find out, no one even asked. Does anybody, I'll ask this rhetorically, uh, don't, does anybody even know the percent of expenditures that goes into instruction at Midlands Tech? No way you should. It's only thirty-seven percent. So that tells me, like the other organizations that we're dealing with, they're not as efficient and as effective with their money, our money, as they should. Those questions should have been asked with every presenter. Number one, are you a need or a want? And of course, the biggest want of all is the size of the council's budget, over three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, double the typical county of our size, that's for county council expenditures. That's your wants, it's not our needs. We don't, we don't need to be spending this kind of money. It can go to life-saving equipment. You guys do not save our lives, no offense. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
So we now close the, um, public hearing at six twenty. Thank you. We, we're down to, um, item eight, ordinance resolution and orders. Item A, first reading, by time only, ordinance number seven ninety-four, and ordinance to establish a military rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two. Can we get a motion to-
It'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Has been moved in second. Um, since there's no discussion, all in favor, aye. Poses nay. Thank you. Pass seven zero. Now down to item B, second reading, order number seven ninety-three. To establish operating capital budget for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two. To provide for the levy of taxes for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two. To establish fees and service charges for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-two. To provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county-related funds. To provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain physical and other matters relating to the county government and other matters related thereto. Can we get a motion to approve?
It'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Has been moved in second. Are there any discussions? Um, there, there's one that I have, um, Mr. Whitaker, you and I have discussed it. Um, it, it appears that we made a mistake with the, um, the sheriff's budget. Um, one of the things we said is, um, um, that went up versus all the other ones.
We, we're gonna review, there were just two, um, account items that went up. I'm sorry. For the equipment maintenance agreement and the software maintenance agreement, we're gonna research that and see why that went up.
Okay.
Ready for, by, um, the budget to discuss that.
Okay, all right. Um, there's no other discussion. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, aye? Poses nay? Okay, I'm trying to see who did nay. Okay. Um, let the record show five, two. Nay for the second reading. Wait a minute, we don't even have a motion list yet. Thank you. We're down now down to number nine, board and commission minutes. Information only. Parrenottis Commission, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Disability and Special Needs Board, March eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Um, as information, ten. Um, disability and special needs, I'm Diane Willis, District One, can we get a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Diane Willis, uh, for the Disabilities and Special Needs Board.
Second.
Has been moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay. As the record shows, seven zero. Old business non, new business non. County administrator report.
Well, good evening. Um, we're gonna start, you wanna start and, and? Okay, so we're gonna start talking about our employee engagement survey and I'm gonna read a statement and make a request for action from council. Um, and, and we're gonna talk about strategic planning. Um, so I wanted to, you can't hear me? Can you hear me? You can hear me now? Okay. Um, good strategic plans use data on current activity to plan and develop goals and actions for improvement. In support of our future, I'm seeking the support of county council for the purchase of an employment, employee engagement survey from a company called Talent Keepers. And I think you have some materials on your desk. I, I have two, um, there's a, there are two full brochures from the company, but there's also a, one handout about the plan that we're looking to purchase. It's the foundational plan and you see the three categories. Talent Keepers, um, and their, their tagline is a trusted name in employee engagement and retention solutions since two thousand. Um, the Talent Keeper Plan that we're looking to purchase, the foundations plan, um, is about three, three, they quoted us three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. All right? The rationale, um, Fairfield County is currently a government of three hundred and eleven staff. Uh, Fairfield County leadership believes that engaging staff that is listening and learning from them about their experiences as staff members at all levels is critical to improve employee retention, support, increase productivity and improve job satisfaction. As a group, we are seeking to become high-functioning and organizationally healthy. High-functioning and organizationally healthy government engage in all levels of staff to understand why people join, stay and leave. Fairfield County is in need of a meaningful data to help us to understand why talented employees choose to join, stay and leave. Meaningful data about why talented employees choose to join, stay or leave can be collected through employment engaging, employment, employee engagement survey systems. And that's what we have before us with the Talent Keeper quote. Um, so we set it on this quote as the most economical and best way to meet our data needs. And I have, um, today received an end-user license agreement and purchase agreement that I'll be reviewing. And I'm just basically seeking your support, um, I guess an up and down vote on, um, purchasing this, this, um, survey for our staff.
Okay, um, uh, uh, um, questions, um?
Any questions, yes. Yes, sir.
Um, let me, Mr., um, one of the things, um, we, we talked about is, um, um, will it measure, um, when, when people need training and that kind of thing?
And I, you have the, the information before you and I, and we're two-
That right?
It will, yes, it will measure the needs, the challenges of- It will, yes, it will measure the needs, the challenges of what, what folks are saying about their experiences as employees.
And how, how to increase productivity?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, this expense, um, we can take it out of like HR, right?
Um, yes, um, in discussions with our, with our, um, HR director, he's not here tonight, um, we can either take it from the double oh eight general operating or HR.
Okay.
So we just have to figure out.
Why do we need to vote on it? I mean, it's something that, uh-
I don't think it's a vote, it's just support. Seeing that the origins were county council, I'm just asking for your support to kind of, it was the kind of-
And, and we, and we will vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Why, I mean, why would we vote on it when we didn't vote on the poll workers? Uh, you know, it's, it's something that's needed.
We will vote.
Why?
Mr. Gilbert.
Why?
Because we say we gonna vote. I, I mean, you, 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 you asked this question. You, you, you asked the question, you gonna get what you want, but, but what's your problem?
My problem is, it's, it's your response. I asked, why do we have to vote on it?
Because we need to see how council gonna respond. It's a council decision.
It was a council decision on the poll workers too, but you made the decision to go ahead and do it.
And Mr. Gilbert, I talked to you personally on the poll workers, since you wanna bring it up. I did talk to you, and if you say you didn't, I, I'm, I'm telling you, and you told me, I said, you know, one of the things, Mr. Paul, it might not be for, where do you stand? And what did you say? Uh-uh.
I'm not arguing with him. I mean, he's-
Okay, um, any, any other question from council? Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Whitaker. Who, who conducts the survey? Help the survey?
No.
Before the results come through.
Um, it's all software-based. It'll go to the, to leadership. It'll go, you're trying to see if we can, a vendor will, right.
Thank you.
All right, so it's a very clean process.
But, but Mr. 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 Whitaker, now you will get the survey, correct?
Yes.
The results of the survey?
Yes.
Is handled by you, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, um-
I mean, not, not just me, the HR department, we'll share the results with you all, so it is not a, i- if the question is implication, somehow I handle something or I can, what-
No, but the question is, you will get the result?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm paying, we're, the county is paying for this vendor to provide data. We'll get the data.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? You got it.
Okay. All right, the next item is, do you wanna, and then I come back and talk about the new government complex, or do you want me just to complete mine?
That's fine. I, I have two updates that I can give.
Okay.
Um, one is just to update council of something that's recently happened. We found out that the South Carolina Scenic Highways Committee has voted to recommend that South Carolina scenic byway designation be bestowed on three sections of highways in Fairfield County. Section one begins at the intersection of South Carolina thirty-four and Coleman Highway near Ridgeway Town Limits and proceeds along Dogwood Street, turns east on Roof Street and then north on Palmer, ending at the intersection of Palmer and Thomas Street. Section two begins at the intersection of Palmer and Thomas Street and continues fifteen miles north on US twenty-one, ending at the intersection of with Camp Welfare Road, and there is some maps that are coming up for you as well. And then section three is a ten-mile section that forms the northern route of the byway. It begins at the intersection of Camp Welfare Road and US twenty-one and travels west across I seventy-seven and South Carolina two hundred, where it becomes Mobley Highway. This recommendation will be forwarded to the South Carolina General Assembly for final designation. After we learn about that final designation, these sections in various locations along these byways can be promoted as tourist attractions through the county. And so once we get that final designation, that'll be another thing that we can do to kind of promote and encourage tourism and travel into Fairfield County. Just wanted to give council that update. The next is on our plans for some strategic planning. Over the next, I'm sorry.
Do anyone have any questions about the scenic byway? This is a good deal, a really good deal for this county, especially, um, um, the Ridgeway area? Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So over the next six months, Mr. Whitaker and I will work with the departments to try to come up with a, to develop a strategic plan for the county. The goal is to guide the direction for the county by developing the right goals regarding decisions related to updating our policies, our procedures and selecting new projects going forward in, which will go into the next budget year and the next calendar year. So starting in June and July, we'll be meeting individually with department leaders to discuss their strategic goals. We'll focus on what each department is trying to achieve, gather data on, that qualifies if they've achieved those goals, review their current programs and services and measure the performance of those programs and services. This not only includes identifying these items with the department heads, but also going through things like updating our county's website to reflect current and accurate information and streamlining how we communicate. We like to include as part of this process, a strategic planning session with county council after the budget is adopted in July one. Once this is done, then we can work with council to also finalize, what are your goals, where direction would you like to see the county come in? So that we can take what we get from the department goals, along with some of council's goals, to come up with a good strategic plan to move us forward. We're not trying to do something that's like a ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan. We're trying to look at immediate needs. What are some things that the county needs to do, to, action steps we need to take in the next year, two years? So that we can kind of get easy action steps and then look at long-range planning after that. So once we completed the budgeting process, we'll come back to council to look at some dates that worked to get you all together for your strategic planning session. But just wanted to let you know that we've already requested the monthly reports from the departments and we'll be sitting down with them. And this is just, again, to identify what they do, how do they do it? How can we make sure we are more transparent and get information out, not only to you all, but also to the public? And what can we do to streamline our processes and procedures and update some of our old policies as well? Are there any questions related to that?
Yes, are we going to include the public?
That's a very good thing. Right now, we are looking at the survey results from the comprehensive plan. That's where we've gotten the latest updates from the public, some ideas of things that they would like to see, some of their concerns. We had really good feedback from that comprehensive plan survey. But if it is the will of the council for us to have any kind of other public meetings as part of strategic planning, then yes, we most definitely will can add those to the, um, strategic planning process.
At least, I, I think that it would be necessary if, uh, once we come up with, uh, the goals for the department heads and other, and the council, that we really have some input from the public as well, that they get a chance to kind of look at those, prioritize some of the things that they see as well, so that, you know, we're making sure that we're inclusive.
Yes, ma'am. I completely agree with that.
And, and, and one of the things, as, as you note, um, one of the things we're trying to do is make sure, um, council and everyone else be able to get information so you know how to, um, um, make decisions based on, on what's actual versus what you might hear and that kind of thing. So again, a- as we develop this, um, um, we should have more knowledge going forward as it relate to council also.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, is it, I'd like to know if I could ask the, uh, uh, economic director a few questions about progress on-
And I'm-
Industry that may be interested in coming in.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a statement in my comment and then you can follow up, Mr. Davenport. I, I want to, the order though, that I wanna go in, I wanna go next to an update on the new government complex handout that you have? You have a handout? Just kind of, if you, can you, okay. Um, everybody have their handout that says, new government complex projects, okay? So just wanted to share this with you, um, that basically we, if you look at this form, um, we, we are basically three projects on here, the new government complex, the courthouse and the MLK monument are the three projects. And basically where we are on the new government complex, we're about fifty percent, um, through that project. So what you're seeing is the last fifty percent for completion of the new government complex project, okay? Um, and, uh, you know, you have on here the status with the key over here that talks about discovery, planning, procurement, delivery or closeout, a close, and then you have the complexity from high, medium and low and what that means, all right? And so we wanted to, um, you know, right now, we have about twenty-five of us of the eighty folks that, so we're not even halfway in moving to the new government complex. Um, and you can see from the categories that the sub projects include the, and some of the high. And I wanted just to highlight some of the things that we, um, that are hot, that we consider highly complex, which is the relocation, um, the recreation relocation, and you can look at your, your, are you, you look like you have a question, Mr. Bell.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, you know, the, the nine-one-one center call relocation, the sheriff relocate, these are all sub projects going on at the same time. Um, the, the uplift projects, you see all the things listed there, the emergency, uh, management of the campus, work that we're doing, we're meeting to make sure that the campus is compliant, compliance with all the things to make sure the folks are safe while they're there, and then the security and safety improvements. And you can see where all of these are in the stage of their development, but we're talking about thirty-three activities that are still going on presently to get us fully moved into our new government complex building. We just wanted to update you on the fact that this is where we are in this project. Any questions about that? So we're, we're, you know, folks are getting settled in over there, but there's still a lot of work to be done.
And it appears that we, um, council would not go to the second meeting in June. Is that correct?
We, um, actually had our, um, audiovisual training folks over today and we're, um, looking to have everything tested and ready by the June twenty-seventh meeting, I believe it is. Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We wanna, we wanna do that properly. Any questions? Okay. All right, so, um, Mr. Gilbert, I'm gonna give two updates. The first one is the progress on the wastewater treatment plant, and then of course, to answer your question about economic development. Um, and then Mr. Talk, Mr. Davenport can fill in. Fairfield County has prepared and submitted to the town of Winsboro a letter of intent describing what the county seeks and needs to enter into a project participation agreement for a wastewater treatment plant. We are currently waiting for the town's response to that letter. Over the last couple of weeks, our attorneys have met with the attorneys of the joint system in Winsboro to discuss the status of our letter of intent, as well as the potential of getting ARPA funds to construct a sewer line connecting the Commerce Park to the existing Winsboro wastewater treatment plant. The sewer line is important to bring the startup affluent to the joint systems plant once it is constructed. Through our council, through, um, our legal council, which is a gentleman named Walt Carden, we have learned that Winsboro's attorney was on board with the plan to seek, um, ARPA funds, but said he needed to confirm with his client, which is the town of Winsboro. Once we get the thumbs up from Winsboro, we can start the process of designing the sewer line and drafting the grant requests. Everyone agreed that a short agreement would be needed to handle the issue of ownership, which would be with the joint system and operations initially Winsboro, but shifting to the joint system once the joint system plant is completed. Um, and regarding our letter of intent, remember, that's the letter where we talk about what we need as a county to enter into an agreement to build a wastewater treatment plant. We've asked Winsboro attorney, uh, to receive a copy containing their comments and revisions, and he said they are working on trying to get it to us as soon as possible. Any questions about the fact that we're working on the, the letter of intent, um, the sewer line and, um, waiting or, um, getting ready soon to meet with the town of Winsboro around their comments on what they're looking for in a, in a joint water sewer, I mean, excuse me, in a wastewater treatment plant? Progress is being made, we're, we're, we're talking. Questions?
Any questions of council, any? Um, I think you've been heavily involved, Mr. Rose, or anything?
No.
Okay.
Okay. And then, um, the economic development, um, Mr. Davenport has informed us that these last thirty days have been very active for their, their staff and that in the number of requests for information and the size of the project, um, there's nothing concrete, um, that I have to share. Um, just know that staff is working hard to, to build our economic development capacity. That's that, those are my comments.
Uh, question, uh, with the progress, you know, with the companies and things interested in Fairfield County, until we get the sewer agreement with, with the town of Winsboro, are we able to accommodate companies up until that?
Mr. Rose, I mean, Mr. Davenport?
So, so repeat, repeat the question, it was, can we accommodate new companies today?
The capacity, you know, companies are looking at it, you know, I, I spoke with you last week and you expressed your enthusiasm about the companies, uh, that, that's contacted you about possibly looking at Fairfield County. My concern is, is that until we get our waste and water treatment facilities up in agreement with the town of Winsboro, do we have the capacity to take care of, of some of these companies now?
Um, We do have the capacity to take, to take care of some of them, but, but not all of them. And that's been our problem, our issue all along is that we get, we get cut basically on paper. We never get in the game. They, they can look and see what our sewer capacity is and they move on to the next community. We, but again, we can handle some of the companies that have smaller requirements. Um, the, 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 the need and what I'm excited about with the, the connecting to, uh, Winsboro is that does give us, would give us five hundred thousand gallons of new capacity, um, which is, although it's not huge, it's, it's, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a much more than we currently have. So we would be in the game on, on, on a, on a much greater number of projects. And the other, um, and the, the thing, the other benefit or the other reason why I think we should, we, we need to push forward as quickly as possible is that connecting to Winsboro's system is, from what I'm told by the engineers, is two years or less. In order for, you know, a, a, a larger company that's gonna build a larger facility that needs a larger amount of sewer, it will take them two years to get, to get their facility built, to go through their processes and so forth. So we can, um, if someone to come, someone to, were to come along today and we were partying design of the, of the new connection to Winsboro, we could meet their requirement. But it, but it, you know, if we wait and somebody comes along today, we'll get, we'll get passed over. So that's, that's the urgency that, 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 um, I think we need to communicate is we have opportunity. Um, we, we, we just need to press on with, with action.
Are you at liberty to say about how many companies may be looking at Fairfield?
Yeah, I, so, um, last year, I, I think we had, just to give you, last year we had twenty-one requests for information over the course, significant over the course of the year, I believe is what it was, in the last fourteen days, eight RFIs. One of them was four hundred and fifty questions. So that, that's what an RFI is, it's request for information. And, you know, so, um, we've got, we got eight of them in the last fourteen days. And they are the largest projects, several of them are the largest projects that I've ever seen in my career. So, and we can meet their need from a sewer standpoint if we do, in fact, you know, get connected. So it's, 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 uh, it's a really interesting time in economic development right now. There's a wave of, of activity out there that, that is unprecedented. And we haven't seen anything like this, um, in, in, in my career ever, so, uh, and I started in nineteen ninety-two, so.
Yeah. Mr. Davenport, how, how much is our excess sewer capacity currently?
Uh, it's slightly over a hundred thousand gallons.
But, but, but one of the things, um, as, as we talk about this, and so now might be a good time to, I'm gonna talk. Um, we have been working tirelessly on developing, talking about this wastewater treatment facility, talking about the extra line going from, um, Winsboro. We, we've been meeting, we've been talking. We've been trying to see how we can build our infrastructure out. We've been doing really, I think, based on the work this kind of done previously, when you look at the work we've done lately, it's probably exceed any that we have previously done. Okay, and trying- Okay, and trying to build this infrastructure out. That's what we're doing and wh- and the reason we need to build the infrastructure out is to prepare for the future. Okay, and, and again, that's what we're doing. The reason, the reason Mr. Davenport can talk about a line is because there, there are means whereby, whereby we can do those kinds of things now. Um, there's infrastructure money coming to us. We've, we've met with the, um, um, the rural infrastructure authority. We've been meeting with various people, trying to make sure that this county is in position to take advantage of every opportunity that comes our way. That's what we are doing today. Okay, people can talk all the stuff all they want to, but they can't say we're not working to get these things done. Okay, a- 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 and, and these are man hours that we're putting in, trying to make sure it happens. And that's the work. Okay, and, um, so, so as you look at it, this pad that we just, um, I'm just done, hey, groundbreaking. I think Cheryl and I attended the groundbreaking. But the, the work, um, trying to get the spec building done, hadn't done one in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. We're building that. We, we, we're, we're getting, um, um, requests for information on a daily basis. That's the work we're doing, okay? And, and, and I'm, and I'm, and to be really frank with you, I'm proud of that work.
Well, my only thing with that is that full council should know that some of the progress that's going on because our constituents asked us about, you know, our economic development. And if you don't know, you don't know.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that it, it, you know, if something, I know you can't tell us everything, but it's keep us abreast of some of the progress or what's going on. That's my reason for, for contacting you last week and just asking because some of the constituents had asked me the questions.
Sure. It's, and it's a good question and I, and, and, um, I know it's, it appears there's been a lull in, in the economic development effort, but, um, if you, when, we had five available buildings at one time and now we don't have anything. So the, with the economy the way it is, companies are wanting to get in and get started as quickly as they can. And so they're looking, the first thing they're looking for is an existing building and they're just, we don't have one, you know, and, um, so some county, you know, there, and there are a lot of counties that are in the same boat as we are that don't have, that do not have a building out there. So getting the spec building built is, is a critical, i- is a critical next step. And the, we're at a, not only do we have a high activity, but we, we've got, this is the one time where there's actually funds out there to, um, extend that connection line to the, to the Winsboro system with the ARPA, ARPA situation, but that's, you know, federal and state money that's available. If we just, you know, if we go after it, we can, we can likely, likely get it, which that wasn't avai- that hadn't been available for, you know, since the seventies for sewer, that kind of thing. So, uh, it's a really, it's a critical time, we need to, we need to, um, you know, press forward, press hard.
Um, another point I want to make too though is oftentimes people do ask us questions and you want to be able to tell them what's going on economically. However, when it comes to that, so sometimes I take the abuse of not knowing what's going on because if you give information to people and that information go beyond what's necessary, people walk away from projects. And that's the pe- that's the piece that people got to understand. People will walk away from a project if you put information out prior to them wanting you to put that information out. Okay, it happens. So that's why we keep information sort of closed to the vest and I, and, 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 and Mr. Davenport, Mr. Whitaker, we plan to continue to do that. And the reason is because we have too much at stake not to do so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, yes, sir, I believe so. Okay.
Have you been notified that there are several lights out at Jordy Park?
Yes.
How, how long ago was you notified?
Uh, the, um, we started meeting with the, um, acting, he was acting at the time, um, recreation director several months ago to talk about the, it was, I think it was actually on our project list when I arrived. So we've been, we've been talking about it for a while.
You, you, it, 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 I mean, this ain't, this ain't directed towards you, but
Sure.
if, if you arrived in December and was notified, lights are out at Jordy Park. And there had not been an action plan that came before us, voted on any money to replace these lights. There's ballgames going on. Jordy Park
You know.
is the most concentrated recreational play.
Right.
The most kids in Fairfield County. I just don't understand how come recreation has happened to reschedule games, to get games in.
Yeah.
You've got over three hundred kids. It has not came before council. Thirty thousand dollars when it was told that it needed to go for council. Now the price is up to fifty thousand.
Wow.
It, it, it just blows my mind, the place where most kids in Fairfield County play, and they can't even get lights to play in. And it has not been brought before this council. And I don't know who told you not to bring it before council.
Right, it wasn't, it wa- it wasn't brought to me as a council action. It was brought as a, a capital project that needed to be. And so we've, we've been talking about Jordy Park.
And, and, Mr.
Getting the lights.
Mr. Whitaker, don't sit there and, I guess, and take that, one of the plans, no, but one of the plans.
It amazes me that we're spending dollars everywhere else in Fairfield County. Where's most kids are at in Fairfield County, we can't even get lights replaced. In Fairfield County. That's amazing.
Um, and Mr. Whitaker, one of the things, um, you and Ms. Williams talked to me about was last week, about how we can get those lights done.
Right.
And the reason is not on, tell them the reason is not on the agenda today. Because we don't have a bid.
Right.
Okay, we are already making plans to do the lights on Jordy Park. Okay, one of the things we looked at is a state contract, how you can do that. This is just something to bring up to start some stuff. But, but when, I guess when you got the information, when we got it, we already making plans to do the work at Jordy Park. Already making.
About time you get the work done.
Okay.
You get a point five million dollar recreation center, if you can't spend thirty thousand dollars.
But, but, but who can't spend it? It, 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 it ain't thirty, it ain't thirty thousand, it's fifty-one thousand was the last quote that we got, right, Ms. Williams?
It was thirty thousand when it first started.
Well, no one told me about thirty thousand, but it told me about fifty-one thousand and we gonna get it done. Okay?
Also, since we are moving and getting closer into moving into the new administration building.
Yes, sir.
Have a few, had any kind of usage of this building, anybody paying for it that might want to do it?
We, we have put together a, a decommission team. You, you can obviously see that we cleaned up the place, that's, that's the first thing to try to get it, um, looking better. And I, and I think, um, I want to applaud our, our staff for doing a great job of that, if you look around the facility. But we are, we have formed a team, I don't know when that first meeting is, but we formed a team, a decommissioning team to think about either the sale, you know, just to think about the implications of what to do next with this be, this building. So we're working on that.
Mr. Whitaker, um, going back to Mr. Paul's question though, how long have the lights been out? Do anyone know?
It was, it was, the way it was communicated to me was, um, I think a storm happened.
When did that storm happen?
I, I, I couldn't, I don't remember.
Over a year, two years ago?
But, but it was a, it was a project, it was on our project list.
So it was on, it was on a project list when you came?
Yes.
So that mean that the lights were out prior to that?
Yes.
Okay, but now it's the issue.
That makes it even worse.
Okay, but, but the point is, here we are, we are having to fix it and we gonna fix it. That's why, that's why we, we, we looking for the money to be able to do it with. And that's why we, we looking at state contracts, to see whether, how we can get this done.
Yes.
Really before the end of the year.
That's the plan. You want to?
That, that's the plan, for the end of this fiscal year, I mean, the, um, the budget year, June thirtieth.
My last question.
Yes.
Is the new Molly Creek access area, the Lake Water Reef, new beach area.
Yes.
I received learn that it's being trashed, the bathrooms were terrible. Who is responsible for cleaning up that area?
That's a great question. Um, I would think that that, that a park.
Duke Power.
Duke Energy is responsible for Molly Creek Park, every, every bit of it, everything. So, uh, from concessions to bathrooms to cleaning up. And it's my understanding that on this weekend, uh, they're going to open the beach. So they're trashing the beach, I'm sure. We can call Duke Energy to take care of that.
Okay.
And I'd just like to make one comment. Miss, uh, Mr. Chair, did you not say that you're waiting for, um, bids on Jordy Park lights?
Yeah, go, Ms., Ms. Williams.
I can give an update on that. So I first learned about Jordy Park probably about a month after I got here, when we started meeting with some of the departments about different capital needs. There is no capital funding assigned to replace those lights, that was not in the current budget year. Um, there is some funding in the operations account that could go towards replacing the lights. The original quote that was received was just one quote from one contractor. It did not go through the county's procurement process, it wasn't properly advertised. And so we can't, at the cost of, the original cost of about thirty-one thousand dollars, we have to have at least three quotes or either advertise it. And so the thought was to try to go back and look on state contract because when we asked if that quote was still good, the contractor came back at a higher amount of fifty-one thousand, which again puts us into, we definitely now will have to put it out through advertising to get the, the, the procurement bidding process. So we went to state contract and right now we're trying to coordinate to see if there are any electricians who could do the same work underneath state contract. The challenge is because capital funds are the only funds that roll over, this is operations fund. So the work would have to be completed also within this budget year. So we're kind of time constricted with being able to get the quotes in and have a contractor who would be able to complete the work within this budget year because those funds won't automatically roll over like a capital project would.
So the reason we started at thirty-one thousand dollars.
That was just one contractor.
It was one contractor's quote. And when we asked if that contract was, if that quote was still good, they came back with a higher amount the second time around. And so now if we can find somebody on state contract, you avoid having to go through the formal, um, advertising through procurement. But then the second challenge is will they be able to complete the work in this budget year because it's operations funds that we're looking because there was no capital project identified in this current budget year.
No one wrote on the record, I apologize to Mr. Whitaker, it seemed like it was directed at him, but it was just kind of upsetting that it's gone on for so long, no action can take place.
Okay, that's, end of our report.
Okay, but, but, um, and the, and the, and I, and I hate to be back and forth, but the point I want to make is we want to thank you all for the work you've done to try to correct a lot of these things that have been falling into crack. And we're trying to get it done today. So again, I want to thank you for your, for, for the, for the diligence that you bring forward. So we can get this work done as we should have been doing all along. Okay, so again, now we at a place where we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to get Jordy Park done by June thirtieth. Okay?
Alright. End of our report, thank you.
Um, heard the council report. Down to county council, time, any council member?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to mention that today, um, I was able to attend the ceremony at, um, M. Lilly, where they donated mattresses to the sheriff's department and to EMS. And we did thank M. Lilly for their donation. And I think there's probably about nine.
It was thirty-one mattresses.
Thirty-one mattresses donated. So it's very good that they are really becoming very good community partners. So we certainly appreciate their donation and, uh, the sheriff's office and EMS and fire were really, really happy to receive these donations.
Um, thank you, um, Ms. Ms. Green, uh, for attending. And again, um, our thanks go to M. Lilly for, for all the work they do and how they help us in this county. And not only by employing people, but being a good citizen.
Chairman Dale, members of council, I just want to thank this past weekend, the Chamber of Commerce and the airport, the old Ways and Wheels Festival, and I was able to attend. It was a great event. I want to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, putting on a great event, I think they had a good turnout. Thank you to Denise, Director over the airport and everybody that was involved in making it a successful event.
Um, thank you, um, Mr. Paul, it, it really was a really good event. So, um, um, so again, we want to thank Ms. Brian for all the work she do in trying to make that happen. Any other? If nothing else, um, nothing before, before council, no executive session, can we get a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close as nay? Meeting is adjourned.